It's been moved and seconded to postpone Ordinance 31-05-22 to our next meeting on July 12. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Thank you. New ordinances for discussion. Counsel, and there's two of them, so I'm going to read them together. Counsel, to consider ordinance number 34-06-22, an ordinance for the change of zoning from R1 low-density, single-family residential to R2 low-to-moderate density, single-family residential, for approximately 40 acres south of East 191st Street, west of Pebblebrook Golf Course, and approximately 65 feet east of Moon Town Road in Noblesville Township.
Moved to introduce. Second.
And then the next item is Counsel to consider ordinance number 35-06-22, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R2 low-to-moderate density, single-family residential, to R2/PD, single-family residential plan development, including adoption of a preliminary development plan and waivers for approximately 40 acres south of East 191st Street, west of Pebblebrook Golf Course, and approximately 650 feet east of Moon Town Road in Noblesville Township.
Moved to introduce. Second.
Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Good evening, Kevin Martin, Senior Planner with the City's Planning Department. As you mentioned, I'm going to be presenting both of these items together. The first item is the rezoning for the property. It's going from R1 to R2. And then the second item is establishing the PD ordinance, going into R2 PD, and adopting the regulations for this development. As you mentioned, it's located just south of 191st Street. It's approximately 650 feet east of Moon Town Road. You can see the site here with its vicinity. It is just west of the Pebblebrook Golf Course. You can see here. As I mentioned, the property today is zoned R1, and you can see that most of the surrounding areas are also zoned R1, with the exception over to the east, which is R1 PD, part of the Pebblebrook Golf Course Plan Development. So this proposal includes about 41 acres of this very linear site. The applicant is proposing 76 single-family units. It comes out to a density of about 2.6. Most of these homes are going to be in the unit range of 1,800 square feet and up for one-story homes, and 2,500 square feet and above for two-story homes. The site is only accessed from 191st Street, which is its only frontage, and it preserves a lot of the natural area over on the floodplain, or on the flood hazard zone to the south of, along the south of the site. And it includes a new pond and connection over to the golf course from this up here. The internal streets will be public city right-of-way. As I mentioned, there's one detention pond, and it went to, this has been reviewed by the Plan Commission, and it received a recommendation of approval for adoption. I'm here if you have any questions. The applicant's Rob is also here if you have any questions for them. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions of Mr. Martin? No. I know that Mr. Dobishewitz is here, so he would like to speak.
Trying not to be redundant and make judicious use of our time. I know we were, it was announced that we have 30 minutes to make a presentation, and we'll endeavor only to use five or six of those minutes.
But if you'll please state your name and your address.
Good evening, for the record, John Dobishewitz with the Law Firm Nelson &amp; Frankenberger with offices at 550 Congressional Boulevard in the City of Carmel. We represent the petitioner, Platinum Properties Management Company and Dries Homes. Present tonight on behalf of the petitioner is Steve Edwards of Platinum Properties, as well as Lee Phillips with Dries Land Acquisition Manager, and Jim Schenner, Attorney, with our office. As staff indicated, the matter before you this evening is the Pebblebrook Crossing Residential Community rezoning request and preliminary development plan. Not to be redundant, as staff indicated, the site is 41 acres in size. To the north of the real estate is agricultural ground on the north side. We're immediately adjacent to and west of Pebblebrook Golf Course. And to our west is the Longacre Farm subdivision. Further to the south is the Pebblebrook Residential Community. Immediately adjacent and to the west are some larger home sites, which front Moon Town Road. The request seeks to rezone the real estate to the Pebblebrook Crossing Plan Development ordinance with R2, as staff indicated, as the underlying zoning classification. To this end, the uses and zoning classification that surround the real estate include residential zoning, and per the analysis done by staff, the proposed request is compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the anticipated type and style of development, which is identified in the Noblesville Conference of Master Plan for this area. This exhibit is the site plan for the Pebblebrook Crossing development. The community will consist of 76 homes, including ranch and two-story plans. The layout of the site was directed by the objectives of maximizing tree preservation, providing visibility of the golf course, enhancing adjacency to open space, and limiting the number of lots positioned along the west perimeter. As I indicated, there were larger lots adjacent to our west along Moon Town Road. The design team was also tasked to consider utilizing design elements to enhance the character of the site configuration. To this end, the applicant worked with city staff to add curvature to the internal north-south street, vary home front yard setbacks, provide additional landscaping, and terminate the view and site circulation at the south end of the development with a roundabout style of intersection. Not only do these elements have been incorporated, add variety to the site layout, they also will assist in showcasing home architecture, creating small private pocket neighborhoods, and slowing traffic via street design, all of which is a benefit to those homeowners and an added value to the community. The exhibit now on display is a blow-up of that area adjacent to 191st Street. As you'll note, homes closest to 191st Street will face that frontage road, enhancing the architectural appearance of the community for those traveling along 191st Street. This is a unique feature, as most other nearby neighborhoods have the back of the homes facing 191st Street rather than the front doors. The frontage area will also include significant landscaping and an entryway signage, the features of which are identified on this exhibit. The home on the east side of the street, this home here, was further removed from 191st Street, and there's now 100 feet-plus buffer area adjacent to 191st Street from that lot, where typically only a 50-foot setback and buffer is required. The staggering of home setbacks on adjacent lots are more prominently shown here, along the curvilinear street pattern, which eliminates the long uninterrupted street appearance reflected on the original plan presented to the council for introduction in February. As noted, the limited number of lots along the western perimeter of the site are also supplemented with evergreen trees and common area to enhance the buffer yard adjacent to those existing homes. These are additional landscape plantings shown here. And there you see the site of dwellings rather than all rear yards facing those lots to minimize the number of lots which are adjacent to those larger existing residential lots that front Moon Town Road. This is an exhibit that blows up that southern area of the development. Again, lots have been positioned to create 12-lot neighborhoods separated by landscape common area, with side yards adjacent to the west buffer, in order to orient the fewest number of lots to the west. Those neighborhoods, the 12-lot neighborhoods are shown here and here. Tree preservation is provided along the west perimeter, and nearly all of the existing trees on the southern extent of the site will be preserved, as noted by staff. A cart path connection's been provided to the golf course, providing connectivity for those with golf carts to access the golf cart path network within the Pebblebrook Golf Course. And finally, in addition to the undulating street layout, the lot setbacks, as shown, continued from the north. Visual interest has been provided by incorporating a landscape roundabout at the end of the internal street. Again, this will assist both with neighborhood aesthetics as well as traffic calming. That roundabout can be shown here. Here you see the undulating roadway, the various lot setbacks that are shown here, all in efforts to assist with the character of the neighborhood. Regarding home architecture, these are the character exhibits which were provided. The detailed plans were reviewed by the ARB in March and approved by the ARB. As noted, Dries Homes is the proposed builder. The development will consist of both ranch and two-story homes, which Dries builds today at Sagewood and Shaffer Woods Communities. Shaffer Woods is just a bit to the east there along Hazel Dell and 191st Street. Dries anticipates the sale prices for these homes to be approximately, on average, $525,000. In conclusion, we held a neighborhood meeting on May 4th. That was prior to the Plan Commission meeting, and were able to share our plans and explain to the neighbors the development and answer their questions. These questions revolve typically, or generally speaking, around drainage and some invasive species that was in that west buffer that they wanted us to take a look at, and Platinum agreed that the landscape architect would meet with individual owners to address the invasive species at the time of development. It's our understanding that no objections to the requests were registered with the Plan Commission or submitted to date to staff. I confirmed that this morning. And as noted in the staff report, staff explains that the proposal's consistent and compatible with your comprehensive plan, and staff recommends capable consideration of the request. At its meeting on May 16th, the Plan Commission voted to send the rezon, as well as the PD ordinance, to the council with a favorable recommendation for approval. With that, we'll be available to address any questions that you may have, and would ask to be forwarded to your next meeting for additional consideration. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Connor, right, Mr. Connor, I know you always do.
Mr. Dobishewitz, I was trying to follow, there is trail connectivity here, is there not, up to 191st Street?
Yes, sir. There would be an asphalt path constructed along the south side of 191st Street, and internal five-foot sidewalks throughout the development.
And then is the detention pond, will that be wet?
It will be.
Will there be a water feature in it?
It will have a fountain for aeration and mitigation, as prescribed under the UDO.
Okay.
I think it was previously shown in this updated exhibit. It didn't make it onto this updated exhibit, but it is a requirement and will be installed.
The 19 lots on the golf course, is the builder's intent to build, I don't know, I'll pick a number, 2,200 square feet and up on the golf course, or what's the thought process from?
Typically, those lots will be at a premium. We would anticipate many, most if not all, depending on the geology of the area. If we have water issues, there won't be many, there won't be basements, but presuming that those aren't issues, that most of the lots there would have beyond basements and be the larger variety of houses. There's not a restriction and not an update. We can ask the applicant to look at that if you're interested in enhancement in that area.
Yeah, I think that, given the fact you've got golf course lots, you'd want that to be a little higher price point along there. There's, I guess, 20 homes really, if you count the one at the southern end, but that's a par five along there, isn't it? Isn't that Pebblebrook North? I see heads nodding, so.
I'll thank the people that have heads nodding.
Somebody found something on the web. What is this? What else was I going to ask you? You hit the price points, water feature, I think that's all I had, Mr. President.
I have a quick question, Mr. President. That southern end, yeah, southern end, that stubs out to the course, is that only, is the purpose for the cart, the extended cart path?
It is. That's the purpose. And it also affords the residents of the community a path on which to access the wooded area to the south.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor, wait. In the past, we have limited the number of ranch homes or styled homes along a certain portion. If that helps you with any thought patterns to what you're looking for along the golf course.
I mean, it's probably more, some of the ranches may be, because I don't know exactly the square footage of the ranch homes, but you could have a 2,200 square foot ranch, easily enough, but I don't know from a product mix perspective. It's more a function of trying to put some of your, as you said, those are premium lots, so I suspect the buyers generally going to put a larger home on it.
We can take a look at both. One, limiting or enhancing this minimum square footage for those lots, as well as establishing a maximum number of ranches, if that's what the council wants to consider.
Yeah, and I certainly don't want to be unreasonable about it, but if you put larger ranches on there, that would be, I think, aesthetically pleasing, but it's more a function of trying to maximize those lots. I would think the builder would want to do that anyway, but just to make sure that it happens, I think it'd be a good idea. If you can bring us back some ideas.
We'll do that.
We can always amend an ordinance.
I didn't sit in that ARB meeting. I was out that meeting. Darren, do you have anything that you remember that came off?
We did ask, request that any of the sides of houses that face the streets have enhanced architectural features. I think we did a pick 'em of two out of four feet. I don't know what the features were, but, so it looks like there's 10 lots or so.
Mm-hmm.
And we reviewed the rarely out lots, in particular the ones that face the golf course, and the developer did step up a little bit on what we asked to do with the ARB.
Madam President, I did have one more question. There was something in here, John, about fencing.
Yeah, there were a few provisions.
I think it was Section 12C.
One provision is with regard to the area adjacent to the house.
Uh-huh.
And that's the only area where we would permit a solid privacy screen. So if somebody has a hot tub or something like that, they want to have a short segment of fence, the rest of the development would be only permitted metal fencing, you know, the tubular steel, wrought iron style fence throughout the development, but we did want to have a provision that would allow a privacy screen just right next to the house.
Yeah, was, what is it, within 12 feet of the rear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks for that.
You're welcome.
Anything else? We will see you in two weeks.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks very much. Counsel to consider ordinance number 39-06-22, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R4 single-family and two-family residential to R5 multifamily residential for approximately five acres at 1255 South 16th Street.
Moved to introduce. Second.
And then Counsel to consider ordinance number 40-06-22, an ordinance for the change of zoning from R5 multifamily residential zoning district to R5-FH/PD multifamily residential flood hazard plan development, including adoption of a preliminary development plan and waivers for approximately five acres at 1255 South 16th Streets.
Moved to introduce. Second.
Ms. Shelton.
Good evening again. This property is located immediately south of our street department location. As you can see, it is surrounded on the south by residential uses, as well as residential uses to the east. And to the west of this property, there is a church and mixed commercial uses. The property is currently zoned R4, single-family and two-family residential. There is a portion of this development, of this zoning, that is in what is known as the flood hazard area. The flood hazard area, we are not seeking a rezoning on that. It is strictly just the portion of the property that is currently zoned R4 residential. The applicant is requesting the change of zoning to R5, which is a multifamily zoning district. The proposed use is for townhome units, and that would require, based on our current zoning ordinance, an R5 zoning district. The applicant is also seeking an overlay district of a planned development. That would include approximately 53 townhome units on the property that are two-story, each having three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and a living space of approximately 1,360 to 1,400 square feet. This particular development will be known as the Townhomes at Stony Creek. At the, they did appear before the Architectural Review Board. This is a, what I'm going to say, preliminary, preliminary plans for their architecture. They were asked at the ARB that when they do their final plans, that they are required to come back to the Architectural Review Board for approval of the actual townhome units. They also sought waivers. The waivers included a reduction in the peripheral buffer yards. That peripheral buffer yard would be affected by what would be the 16th Street side, as well as the south side and the north side. As far as what is on the west side, they will meet the peripheral buffer of 50 feet because there is a flood hazard zoning district there. They're also seeking a reduction of the front yard setback. That is along 16th Street. It would go approximately from what is required to be 45 feet to 20 feet. They are also asking for a reduction in the parking lot landscaping, both interior and exterior, a reduction in the building-based landscaping, and a reduction in the parking lot setback that would be along the southern property line. Again, stipulations that were talked about at the Plan Commission did include that they would have to come back to the Architectural Review Board for their final elevations, and that they would provide some sort of screening along the southern property line of the parking lot that would be adjacent to this area here. Again, there has been some history to this area. It has been rezoned two different times, back in 2005, and then again in 2016. However, the Plan Commission on both of these ordinances did send a favorable recommendation for adoption by a unanimous vote, and there were 10 members present at that meeting. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions of staff.
Any questions?
The elevations in this packet are different than the elevations we saw at Plan Commission.
They shouldn't be. Are you thinking about the black and white? We had, we did have some little different elevations as opposed to what I brought here. Those should have also been a part of the ARB and the Plan Commission packet.
I don't remember seeing the ones.
Because I like the ones we saw at Plan Commission. These are, I mean, as long as it's coming back to be reviewed, these are very different.
Yeah, it is coming back to being reviewed by the ARB.
And when it goes to ARB, does that include floor plans too, or is that just elevations of the area?
Typically, the ARB looks at, you know, the exterior. They don't typically look at the floor plans.
Mr. O'Connor.
It depends on the builder. Some builders provide a smart one.
Joyce Ann, is the right-of-way on 16th Street from the center of 16th Street to the edge of pavement, and then how far is it from, is it 25 feet from the edge of pavement for the 45 total?
Okay. So basically from center line, so if our right-of-way there is, it's probably a 40-foot right, 40-foot half right-of-way. So technically, the way this would be calculated is from, we're going to assume the center line of roadway is, you know, the true center line. You would do your 40 feet from that. They technically would be required to have, from that point, a 50-foot peripheral buffer yard. They're asking, again, you know, for that reduction so that they can be within 20 feet of the actual right-of-way. That is not the pavement. That would be the actual just right-of-way.
Should be 60 feet?
Yeah, so technically, from center line of road, if that was the true center line, they would, the first building at the edge of the building would be approximately 60 feet.
The one further south, right? Well, okay.
Correct.
Any other questions of staff? Is the petitioner here, would they like to speak?
I'm sure they would.
Okay.
Madam President, members of the council, good evening. My name is Brian Tuohy. My address is 50 South Marine. I'm here representing the petitioner tonight, T&amp;H Investments LLC. First off, thank you for hearing our case. Having played close attention to your advice to not be redundant or too long-winded, I will abbreviate our presentation, but I will try to address a couple of questions I heard. Here with me tonight is Marcelle Berry from T&amp;H Investments. T&amp;H Investments is a sister company to the Hegeman Group, which is the developer of the Levinson Development here in Noblesville. And also with us is Nancy Ramsey, who is the Executive Director of Family Promise of Hamilton County. Their headquarters are here in Noblesville. And Mike Timko, an engineer from Kimley Horn, and also our architect, Russell Lewis. And again, thanks for hearing our case. Joyce Ann did a fine job of illustrating our petition. Essentially, it's a petition to rezon five acres to the R5 district to allow for up to 53 townhomes on this site. This site is, I think you would classify it as an infill site. It's sitting right south of the Noblesville Street Department. It's right across the street from the old tire plant. To the west of it's a company called Always Underground Inc., the Freedom Church, and you can see some residential uses along the, to the south and the west. Here's a view looking north on 16th Street. You can see the tire factory or plant is over there to the right of that photograph. That is, in the background, is the Noblesville Street Department. This is looking south on this site, on 16th Street. So the left there is the tire area, and to the right, you can see our site. What's interesting about this site and the way the petitioner proposes to develop it, that is looking northwest, and those trees screen the Noblesville Street Department. That's in the background of that photograph. All those trees in that photograph will stay in place. This site is also sort of interesting, and it's had a couple of different zonings. I've been advised at one time it was a mobile home community, and back in 2000, I think 16, it was actually rezoned for 63 three-story townhomes. This is a proposal for 53, 10 less, two-story townhomes. So it's had some different possible iterations. And again, this is looking now southwest. All those trees will remain in place. As Joyce Ann said, there's a stream back there. So the site will be pretty well screened, even with the waiver requested. This is looking sort of northeast towards the tire, the old tire facility, and you can see the site steps down. One of the questions I heard was really, how far back are the buildings going to be from the edge of pavement? That measurement is about 50 feet from the edge of pavement to an actual building. The layout, as Joyce Ann showed you, has the buildings facing east and west, so perpendicular to 16th Street. And again, they are set back about 50 feet from the, from the edge of pavement, not the right-of-way of the road. The proposal would include several amenities for the residents of this community, including approximately 122 parking spaces. I believe under your ordinance, about 101 are required. The, in the amenity package, there would be a playground for the residents of the community. It'd be a modular commercial playground. There would be a grill area down to the south end, right here. There would be a clubhouse that would have a training room in it, a fitness center, a computer room, and a leasing office, and one resident, one residential unit. There would be a dog park along the west side here, where the, over by the tree lines and the creek area, and there would be this tree preservation. There's about two, almost two and a half acres, 2.3 acres of green space in this proposed development. I think perhaps that Joyce Ann might have shown, probably my fault, some earlier renderings. These are the renderings of the proposed exteriors that were shown at the Plan Commission. And as Joyce Ann said, the final renderings will have to come back before the Architectural Review Board. Joyce Ann mentioned that we did request for waivers in the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission, which we greatly appreciated, gave us a unanimous recommendation for approval. We worked closely with staff, and in their recommendation, in their staff report, they noted that this proposed use fits in, is consistent and compatible with the intent of the comprehensive master plan, and the staff recommended approval at the Plan Commission. Members of the council... Members of the council, this is, this is an unusual site. It's tucked in next to the city garage. It's across the street from an old tire plant. It's got a big drop in elevation in it from the roadway, and it's had several proposed uses and several different kinds of uses over the last many years. But it's sat vacant now for about 15 years. And what this proposal does, from a local developer that has already an interest in Noblesville, it, it's less intense than the 63 unit, three stories, that were approved back in 2016. It provides for significant retention of trees and screening along the west and south and north sides of the property. It's an enormous capital investment on that site. It's somewhere between 13 and 14 million dollars in a long vacant site, which of course will add significant assessed value. It will allow for a quality residential community owned and managed by a local developer. I think it meets your comprehensive plan. The staff recommended approval, and the, on May 16th, the Noblesville Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval of this petition. We thank you for your time and consideration of this petition. We'll try to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Peterson?
Just to be, now it's coming back to me. We, in order to stay on track with the tax credit application, we saw it at ARB, but we did not approve it. But it needed to be introduced to stay on track for Plan Commission. We did have some remonstrance at the Plan Commission. I know we have a long meeting, but if Nancy would like to speak to Family Promise and their, their work that they do and how they'll be involved in this, I think it would really help paint the picture of this project.
Thank you.
Before Nancy comes up, any other questions of the applicant?
No, I'm not sure. Mr. Tuohy may want to tackle this, but as Mr. Peterson alluded to it, the tax credits, I'm assuming that this is all subject to approval of those credits.
Yes, sir.
And when is that, when are you going to hear back from the tax credit authority?
Yeah, that's a very timely question. We have to have the application in by the end of July, and then we expect, and hopefully this zoning would be part of that application, and we expect to hear in November.
So the sequence of events, you have to have the zoning approved prior to going to get the tax credits?
Yes, sir.
It has to be introduced at ARB?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Sorry, sorry.
Good evening, county council members, or excuse me, common council members, sorry. My name is Nancy Ramsey, and I'm the Executive Director for Family Promise of Hamilton County. We are a social service agency headquartered right here in Noblesville. We are our own 501(c)(3) organization, but we are part of a national organization, so we are affiliated with a national organization. Basically, what we do is we provide services, life coaching, counseling for families who are experiencing housing insecurity. That ranges, the housing insecurity issues range anywhere from homelessness all the way up to families who are paying more than 60% of their income for their housing services, and that doesn't include their utilities. That's probably just rent. The families that we serve are working families here. We have a number of things that we go through with them. So they're working families in our community that our kids are in school with our kids as well, and we just work with them on financial literacy courses, on life skills courses, good tenancy courses, trainings that will be able to be provided at this location. So we will be serving the families living within this development with all of the life skills and trainings in order to help them improve their, their life situation, their family situation. We keep the families together and continues to work with them for up to a two-year period to, to walk alongside them, to help them throughout their life. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Nancy, you would anticipate that most of the units are going to be rent subsidized?
Yes. They will start that way, yes, sir.
Got it.
They will serve anywhere from the 50% AMI up to 60% and 80% of the area median income.
And I'm not particularly well-versed on some of the sections, but I want to see, Section 42 falls into play here?
Yes, sir.
Can you have a question?
That's good to know.
Given the state of the attainable housing within our communities, this is a very timely development, as well as, you know, helps serve the community throughout from now on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another question? If you have another question, Mr. O'Connor?
I probably should add, Mr. Tuohy's still here. Is there going to be or contemplated, because this is, I'm assuming if there's elementary-age school children, there, there's a connectivity there to Stony Creek Elementary, and there's no sidewalk from that development down to that path to the school? And there's no sidewalk from the development all the way to 16th Street? And that's, that's a city issue, but I was trying to figure out if you could connect, make sure there's a way for them to walk from here down, and it may be an eighth of a mile, maybe, but that's something that maybe we can talk about from a city standpoint.
I know the Plan Commission asked us to agree to put in sidewalks within our development and on our perimeter, and we agreed to that at the Plan Commission. But I agree, there's a separation along 16th Street to the school.
Yeah. Because I'm presuming they're going to, most of the kids could walk, wouldn't necessarily need to have a school bus to go that far to go to school, but that's a different topic. Anyway, I just thought I'd get that out there while I was thinking about it.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Council to Consider Ordinance Number 41-06-22, an ordinance approving additional appropriations in the Downtown Development Fund for Levinson Garage signage and establishing a public hearing.
Moved to introduce.
Second?
Mr. Spalding.
Madam President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller. And with your introduction, you really covered the, the main basis of this. This is, my part of this is pretty technical, but what you have before you is an additional appropriation request to fund a project that's been recommended by the Downtown District Committee to the mayor and the council, as was referenced, for signage in the Levinson Garage. And what this action is doing is basically the council saying, hey, there is a cash balance in the Downtown Development Fund, seeking to appropriate it for this purpose, and the source of that cash balance is the fact that this fund gets an allocation of monies each year, and over the past few years, some of those balances haven't been spent. They remain available in the fund for you to appropriate. And if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Spalding? I'll just remind the council members that each year we put $500,000 into the Downtown District Fund. That is for aesthetic opportunities and enhancements to the downtown area. So this is simply utilizing those resources and the Levinson Garage.
And just to be clear, this is not Levinson advertising, it's wayfinding and, wayfinding?
Our contract.
Our, yes?
Yes.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 41-06-22 at our next regular meeting.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to establish a public hearing for ordinance 41-06-22 at our next regular meeting. All those in favor, raise your hand. Nine zero. Great.
Thank you.
It has been an hour since we started this meeting. I anticipate that we will go a little bit longer than this. So may I request a five-minute break, and then we'll come back, and we'll begin to the, the next item on the agenda. So 8:05, everyone, please come back.
Just from a legal perspective, council members, please don't discuss any items in groups during the recess.
Thank you, President.
Come on yourselves.
No, discuss items.
Don't discuss anything.
We can get everyone back together again, please. And again, I want to clarify that we welcome comments from everyone. We're just asking you to not repeat comments that someone's already made this evening. So, we understand that there is a presentation that has been put together by both sides, so we'll go from there. So, council to consider ordinance number thirty-seven dash zero-six dash twenty-two, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R two low to moderate density, single family to R five multifamily residential for property in the one-nine-one-zero-zero to one-nine-four-zero-zero blocks of Allisonville Road, West Side in Noblesville Township.
Move to introduce, second.
Council to consider ordinance number thirty-eight dash zero-six dash twenty-two, an ordinance for the change of zoning from R five multifamily residential to R five dash FH slash PD dash GUO multifamily residential flood hazard planned development with a government use overlay, including adoption of a preliminary development plan and waivers for property in the one-nine-one-zero-zero through one-nine-four-zero-zero blocks of the West Side of Allisonville Road in Noblesville Township.
Move to introduce, second.
Ms. Ashelman.
Mr. Hughes is actually going to address you first.
Okay, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Madam President, and Ms. Ashelman. Just a couple comments for the record. I know we have a lot of folks here tonight. A couple things I wanted to note for those who may not be as familiar with our process. One, what just happened with the motion introduced, and a second is the ordinance is being introduced. It's not a vote on the ordinance. That requires two readings unless they suspend rules. I don't suspect that's going to happen tonight, so this will have a second reading at the next meeting. Tonight is the public conversation portion of this ordinance. And just to explain our process a little bit, Ms. Ashelman is from our planning department, and she is going to explain planning staff's review of this application. The application was not submitted or started by the city. It is a private property owner with the Hamilton County Parks who have put the application together. The reason Hamilton County Parks is on here is because it's a government use overlay. Because there's a government use overlay, our UDO requires a government actor, and that is Hamilton County in this instance. Ms. Ashelman's report that she's about to give is going to explain her review under our standards, under our UVO, under our ordinances, and under state statute as to its compliance with those things, as well as our master planning, and to explain the process it went through before Plan Commission. So, just so we all understand kind of how the process works, and then the applicant will be able to speak, and then we'll have public comment after that.
Okay, to get started, most of you got these papers in front of you. These are some additional items that I have gotten since your packet deadline. One of them is a letter of support from the Indiana Mineral Aggregates Association. There is a resolution from the Board of Commissioners concerning funding and maintenance of the park, and there is also a resolution from Hamilton County Parks Board attached here. So, in addition to the trees I killed last week, here is some additional paperwork for you. The council has received copies of the written minutes from the Plan Commission, along with access to the audio recording of the meeting. I know that many of you have been following this process as it went through with us at the city. The property is located on the West Side of Allisonville Road, approximately nine-hundred feet north of one-hundred-and-ninety-first Street. The site is five-point-eight-five acres. It is currently zoned R two and FH. Only about three-point-six acres of the property are currently located outside the floodplain, and approximately forty-two acres within the floodplain are located within the floodway for the White River. The applicant is requesting a change of zoning to the area outside the floodplain from R two to R five, and for approval of a government use overlay and planned development ordinance. Because of the transfer of the property to a government entity, as Mr. Hughes explained, that's why Hamilton County Parks is a co-applicant on this request. Upon approval of the request, the applicant would immediately, so this is the site. This is kind of what it would look like as a park. There's an area here that is mostly wooded currently. It's approximately, it's between ten and eleven acres. That piece of property would be immediately deeded to Hamilton County Parks upon approval of this request. The majority of the remaining forty-one acres would be given a planned development overlay that would allow gravel extraction for up to five years. That five-year countdown, however, does not commence upon approval of the request. It would commence upon approval of actually beginning the extraction. There's between an eighteen- to twenty-four-month period where they are getting federal, state, and local permits to allow the mining or extraction operation to commence. The change, once the five years stops, the portion of the property shown here would be dedicated to Hamilton County Parks, and they would begin a five-phase development of a park on that property. The remaining approximately eight acres along Allisonville Road is being proposed for a townhome development. Approximately half the property is currently within the floodplain for the White River, so part of this request is a request for approval of a cut-and-fill operation on the site that they would have to go through the letter of map revision process with FEMA, get that approved, also meet all the requirements for our ordinance. This just approves that theory and concept. The, there are elevations for the townhomes within your ordinances and also your packets. Those elevations are just conceptual in nature, and that includes the site plan here. They know it's going to be approximately five to seven years before they would begin that development, and many of our regulations for development could change in that process. So, we are recommending that they go through and be conceptually approved, but they would still have to meet all our requirements in place at the time that they did begin construction. The, we do not allow residential development in the floodplain, so if, for example, they were not able to remove a portion of this property from the floodplain, it would not allow them to develop the townhomes. They have to work through that process. Our ordinance does not permit residential on the floodplain. The PD ordinance includes a number of operational details and limitations as it relates to the extraction operation. It would be limited to a five-year period. There would be no crushing or wet sipping on the property. The aggregate would be transported from there, from here to the River Road facility for processing. The general route for that would be south on Allisonville Road to Field Drive, Field Drive to State Road nineteen, State Road nineteen to State Road thirty-two, State Road thirty-two to River Road. And it is generally the path that their processing from Straw Town is taking to get to their River Road location. It travels along State Road, I'm sorry, Allisonville Road. The preliminary testing on the site has shown that the extraction will consist of sand and gravel removal that is done primarily below water with a crane or an excavator. Even though this is mostly a wet excavation, the applicant will still be responsible for dust control on the site. The applicant did submit, as part of their request, a noise and fugitive dust study that provided information comparing this site and their Straw Town facility. The staff did review those studies, and there were no obvious red flags identified by the reports. One of the things to note, they did take noise readings on the equipment. The noise levels within two-hundred to three-hundred feet of the equipment dropped back down to ambient noise levels. The applicant also submitted a hydrogeologic assessment of the property. That assessment found that with proper monitoring, the proposed sand and gravel extraction is a low risk to negatively impact the local hydrologic system and nearby pumping systems. For those that are not aware, Indiana American Water has two well fields within the area. There is one north of the river, east of Cumberland Road, and they also have a treatment facility on Allisonville Road closer to State Road thirty-seven. Those wells were a concern. Indiana American in twenty-twenty raised some concerns at that time. They have reviewed this report, and there is a letter addressing their statements in the packets from the Plan Commission. It's like exhibit five or six, I believe. The biggest risk with this particular operation is actually during the excavation, and it's not from the actual excavation itself. It's from the equipment that they have on site, and it deals with leaks that they may have in fueling practices and maintenance. So, they have to be very careful to protect the water supply. The report does recommend the use of sentinel wells on the site, and what those sentinel wells do is they work as testing centers during excavation, and you can test the water in the actual hole of the excavation, but the sentinel wells are located in such a way that if something did get in that they didn't know about, the well picks it up, and they're able to treat the contamination if it did happen. They, the report is a little vague. What we have been told is Entera, which is the group that prepared the report, will be on site while they are inserting those sentinel wells, and their recommendation is a minimum of two. While doing the installation, they may recommend more. What they also would do at that time is be able to provide a testing interval for it to be effective. So, the details in the report are a little vague, but they are committed to provide that information to the city. The extraction area on the site will encompass approximately thirty acres of the site, with the end result being a lake of ten to twelve acres in size. They, during excavation, plan to install a combination of birmingham and fencing around the property. They're required for insurance purposes to make sure that they keep their property secure during the duration of their gravel extraction operation. Because this property is in the floodway, a large portion of it, extensive use of mounding is not possible as it could obstruct floodwaters. We believe that DNR is most likely going to require some type of collapsible fencing, so if it does flood, the fencing itself doesn't become an obstruction that catches debris from floodwaters. That would all be identified in their floodway permit from IDNR. They would do mounding along Allisonville Road and a portion of the south part of the property adjacent to a residential home in the area. The ground cover on the mounds will be required to be maintained in accordance with the weed and grass ordinances for the city of Noblesville. Allisonville Road is a secondary arterial road designed to carry traffic with heavy loads from local and also through traffic. Staff has required the applicant to provide an XL D cell lane for the drive access along with a passing blister to, in an attempt to limit the interference of the trucks with existing traffic in the area. The, upon the completion of that excavation, of course, the property would then be deeded over to Hamilton County Parks. A timeline for the implementation, construction, and funding of the park upon receipt of the ground has not been provided, and would be very general based upon their timelines required for permitting as well. During the Plan Commission meeting, they said their parks permitting also runs in the eighteen- to twenty-four-month range, just to get the park approved. Since the Plan Commission meeting, as I noted, there is the resolution from the Board of Commissioners and the Hamilton County Parks Board. In your packets, there was also a letter of support from the President of the County Council. The comprehensive plan shows this area as low-scale residential and preservation floodplain. As the comp plan is a ten-to-twenty-year outlook with a look at the long-term future, that along with other positives and negatives, is the reason for neutral staff recommendation to Plan Commission at their meeting. There was about an hour of comments from the public, at the public hearing during the Plan Commission. The main topics of concern were a lack of support from the community for the project, dust, noise, traffic, and number of trucks, the methodology of the development of the reports submitted by the applicant, the mechanism being used to request the extraction activity as a PD ordinance, risks, appearance of the property, and depth and effectiveness of those on existing private wells in the area. In addition to the public water supply, there are approximately, in total, I believe, seventy-five wells in our study area, which includes a number of homeowners from startups, Village and Craig Highlands, that also rely on private wells for their home water supplies. Full statements from the Plan Commission are in the draft minutes that were provided to you, and they start on page thirteen and go to page twenty-five. The Plan Commission has sent this item, the rezone ordinance, with a seven-three do-not-adopt recommendation and a six-four do-not-adopt recommendation for the PD ordinance. Following the Plan Commission meeting, the County Parks Department, in addition to the items I presented to you tonight, also provided some additional information to answer some questions. I believe mostly Mr. Peterson asked as it relates to their master planning process and some community surveys that they had done as part of that master planning process. Those should be, I believe, directly after your ordinances in the packet. I tried to move them towards the front. All of the items regarding this process have been made available to the public upon request. There is a community group we've been working with. They had a Google Drive access from me with the items the day after it was filed, and I've been updating those when I can. So, I'm happy to take any questions that you have, as I start to lose my voice, apparently, so.
Any questions of staff? Mr. O'Connor?
Just one. Denise, the clock starts on the five years after the permitting is complete, or no?
It would be when they started turning dirt to do the actual excavation.
So, the permits have to be obtained, and then the five years start?
Yes, so.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
It would be most likely at the release of an improvement location permit from us, because they're going to have to have their IDN permit, their IDNR permit. And if I had to guess, they're probably going to need a Corps of Engineers permit before they'd be getting those from us. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Other questions of staff? You know that the applicant is here?
Good evening, members of the council. For your record, I'm Matt Skelton with the law firm of Church Hill and Antrim with offices at Two North Nine Street here in town. I'm here on behalf of my partner, Eric Douthat, who could not be present this evening, so please bear with me. Andy worked with my offices here. There are several others from Beaver Materials. Chris Beaver, Rob Shank, Ally Beaver are present. Hamilton County Parks Director Chris Stice is here, and will address the council as well, with Entera Incorporated, with an update and some refinements for you. Jack Whitman will speak, and his son Oliver is with him. This evening, they specialize in the geoscience and engineering water quality type issues. August Mack is here, August Mack Environmental. Tony Henley and Kendra Edwards are here. They are environmental consultants, and they have helped us analyze the sound and dust-related issues that have been raised. And then William D. Otto Spence Real Estate is represented by the owner, Otto Spence, who is here this evening. He conducted an impact study for the proposal as well. I will try to be very brief with my comments, and we've received the instruction to try not to duplicate, and it's very difficult. There's been a lot of work done on this, on this project, so we are doing our best to eliminate any duplication. I know the project is familiar to you. This proposal would allow the temporary extraction of sand and gravel just until, for the five-year period that Denise mentioned, prior to being conveyed to the Hamilton County Parks and Recreation Department for an expansion of Potter's Bridge Park. Potter's Bridge, as I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but it's approximately twenty-acre, twenty-eight acres in size today. The county has land along the river and extending down to Field Drive, which includes another forty-five. which includes another forty-five acres. The property that would ultimately be granted to the Parks and Recreation Department is another forty-three acres, which would represent about a sixty percent increase in the overall size of what would become Potter's Bridge Park. As Denise mentioned, a portion of the site will be dedicated immediately. It's approximately eleven or twelve acres of mature woodlands that will be dedicated and then the remainder of the site would be at the termination of the removal period for sand and gravel. Let's see here, by, by the Beaver Materials plans to begin removing the sand and gravel as soon as it obtains its approvals. And I'll let Chris Beaver maybe respond to this. But that process is, as Denise represented, I mean, there's some work to be done on that and it's not instantaneous. So that's why the, the five-year period would begin at the completion of that period. I believe, I know you have received, as Denise mentioned, the resolutions from Hamilton County. But this is an important component of this proposal that was not present at the time we were at Plan Commission. The county commissioners voted unanimously to not only support the proposal, but they've committed to fund the development of the, the park area in their resolution. There's a resolution from the Hamilton County Parks Board that actually allocates resources, financial resources for Phase One that will be dedicated immediately of the park. And then as the, the rest of the real estate is dedicated to Hamilton County Parks, the resolution commits to funding the improvements, the other improvements that will happen in the park. And then Denise mentioned the letter of support from the Hamilton County Council as well. So in response to the comments we've received from public officials, from city representatives and elected people and neighbors, we have performed an extensive amount of analysis. And I, I would like to invite Mr. Jack Whitman with Intera Corporation just to address the water quality analysis. He didn't, there's some new information that he'd like to emphasize with, with you folks. And I think they've done some additional work with, some graphic work too.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Council. My name is Dr. Jack Whitman and I'm a hydrologist. And I'm going to talk through the, the work that we did so that you have a better understanding of the risk aspects related to the water supply. Intera, first of all, is a different company than most consulting firms. Most of what we do is we look at, we look at hydrologic analysis and, and risk. And we help use that information that we develop from our work in the field and our work with modeling to really evaluate options for the clients that we have. And we look at, we have a mining division. We have a waste isolation division that works on Hanford. So we deal with nuclear waste, we deal with mining. And we also have a water resources division that does source water supply and development. And our team, the people that worked on this project, myself, and I've been working in the state for thirty years. And in fact, we've been working, our company has worked for Indiana American for the past twenty-five years protecting their water supplies in their wellfields. So that's how we got introduced to this whole idea. And in addition, Oliver was the lead geologist on this project and the lead author of, of that report. Rhett Moore is a colleague and principal that's been with the, with, working with me for the past twenty-five years. And I have no idea what to do about this. So let me, let me just introduce a little bit more about, okay. Our clients, in fact, for the most part, in the Water Resources Division are, are water utilities. We work for all of the water utilities that you know of in the state. We, we work for all of them. We work for state agencies, we work for the Department of Environmental Management, the DNR. We work for the Department, the Finance Authority and the IEDC. We work for all of these on water supply and water supply protection. And we do planning, we work for counties. So the, the assessment that we developed and the project we developed, Oliver's going to describe this work. And we were hired by Beaver Materials because the people that were concerned knew who we were. So they trusted us to answer the questions in a way that would help them understand the risks of this, of this facility. So go ahead, Oliver.
Yeah, and you can see that, you know, hi, I'm Oliver, nice to meet you guys. And that was, you know, mainly due, as you can see, the proximity to the Indiana American wellfield just up the river there. And as you can see on the top there, our study area is, is kind of a more regional look where we, you know, took data from that entire area to analyze this exact site. You know, along with our, our research, we did a lot of onsite geologic data. So we were out on site. And the first thing we did was drill three sonic boreholes. And these are a type of borehole where you get, I would say, extra data. You bring up the entire core of material so you can analyze the material as you see it on the ground, which is important in geology to see, you know, how, how the water moves. It depends on where the clay layers are, where the sand and gravel is. So we can specifically see in a very high detail where those are. You can see we drilled three on the site there. Here's some pictures from the site, constructing the monitoring well. We actually constructed three monitoring wells on site. I know there's some confusion about that and the Sentinel walls and, and those maybe being built in the future. There's three on site currently. You can see some of the material that we brought up in the cores. There's also seven previous boreholes on site that we analyzed along with the three sonic holes. Added resolution, passive seismic geophysical survey, which gives us a depth of bedrock. And the bedrock determines a lot of how groundwater flows. It, it, you know, forms the bowl where the water sits and kind of channelizes it in certain ways. So that was important to get those thirty-two points. And then, as I said before, in two of the sonic boreholes, we constructed one monitoring well up by the river. And then the, the one down south is a nested monitoring well that has a screen in the upper aquifer and a screen in the lower aquifer. So we can look at the differences on how water moves close to the surface and further down. We also installed probes. And these probes measure water levels. And we put these probes in the Beaver Materials monitoring wells that I talked about, as well as three Indiana American water walls, or monitoring wells. And we use that data for, that, that data's input into the groundwater model to calibrate it and get us the most exact answers we can. We took that onsite geologic data and we also added boreholes from across the study area that are in the Indiana database to construct one of the most detailed glacial geology 3D model that I've, I've been a part of. We actually have ten layers. And as you can see, the, the orange is clay, blue is sand and gravel, and the gray is bedrock. So those are separated into discrete layers so we can model the actual groundwater flow. From the 3D model, we were able to construct cross-sections to, to further illustrate the geology. And we'll zoom into this one so we can kind of see what's going on. And kind of the main finding of this geologic investigation is this locally continuous clay layer. That clay layer acts as a barrier essentially to groundwater flow. And, you know, we use that in the model. And we also, you know, so we took the geologic data, all the layers, and we use those to input into the groundwater flow model.
So the work that we did, all of that data collection was so that we could make predictions to actually what could happen if, does water even move to A to B? We didn't even know if water even was going in that direction or maybe it discharges into the river, it's close to the river also. So part of what we were doing, we developed this model. Again, there's a larger model outside of this and we built a nested, highly detailed model inside of it. Ten layers of, of, that were in the geologic and hydrologic model, all based on the data that Oliver just described. And we included the river and all of its features, all the wells that are pumping. And then we started to ask questions. And the questions that we asked was, okay, this is a, this is a really important one. What if that clay that we think and see as continuous everywhere, what if it's not continuous? We're good at being skeptics of our own work. And we were at least thinking, okay, we see it everywhere, but it may be absent. So we asked that question. And we then, we looked at both scenarios. What if the releases that we, that could occur, whatever they might be, the water itself, can the water itself in that, in this pond, can it move to the wells? And then we said, well, if the clay layer's not there, what if it's going right already into the deeper aquifer? And what if, does that get there? And how long does it take? So can water move to the well? The well that is the largest pumper in the Indiana American's wellfield that's on the opposite side of the river? And the answer is yes, but only about point five percent of, of the particles that we distributed in the, in this model even go into that well. So, so that was a small percentage. Five percent if we drop the particles into the aquifer that's deeper. So there's really not a lot of the water that's moving into that well. This is the currently existing pumping well that's right there. And the largest is the closest one. And all of the wells, again, are in this model. And you can see there's kind of a north-south. This, what you're looking at is the capture zone of the, of that well. So if you looked at where the water came from that went into that well, this is the picture that shows where that water comes from. That's the capture zone. So we also asked another question because we knew this information. We knew that the Indiana American also owns property to the south. And they're probably over time, sometime as development occurs, they're going to have to add new wells to that well, to the area that doesn't have wells in it today. So these, we release particles, we put them in the model and we release particles around them to ask the same question. What if it's going that direction? Maybe it's not going to the north, it could go to the south. So we added a, a well into this area that does not have one to see if it might affect anything over time. And one percent of the particles in this originate within the mining layer and, and below the parcel, that is below the parcel. So if you release the particles below that into the deeper aquifer, eight and a half percent. Again, that's, that's saying the thing that we saw wasn't there, the clay layer. We're going to be so conservative, we're going to skip it. Skip the thing that's protecting it, put it down into the deep aquifer. And then it's less than ten percent. And we also added another well at the northernmost boundary to look at that. These are hypothetical wells, these are not real wells. And three percent of these then came into the, from below the mine layer into the, into that well. So all of these things that we did were evaluating future conditions. And then after releasing them from the, from the well, where, and asking the question, where's the water coming from into that well? Real or imagined well, or real or future well? We asked it the other way. We said, okay, we're going to go along the property. I don't care how big any of the pond is. We're going to go right along the property and release particles and see how long it takes those particles to get to the well from the site. So it's the reverse of the previous. And some of them, as you can see in this picture, go into the river as you'd expect. The river is connected to that aquifer. And some of them all go all the way to the, to the well. And this box and whisker plot, which is what it's called, is really just a, how much time does tho- do those particles take to get there, to that well? And if it's in the upper aquifer where there is a clay layer below it, the earliest arrival is seven and a half years to get from A to B. And if that clay layer that we saw everywhere, if it wasn't there, that could be as low as three point six years. So now, if we look at those hypothetical wells, we did the same thing. We said, let's release the particles backwards and see what those differences are. And it's ten years on the upper one and seven and a half years on the lower. That is the lower aquifer. And this is a well that doesn't exist. We have to, I think that's important. And the same with the, the final hypothetical well. That goes from about six years, five point seven is the median, to two and a half years. So that's pushing it right up against the, against the edge of the property. So with current pumping, point five percent of the particles even get there. The earliest arrival is seven and a half years. And the median is nine years. This is a long time in groundwater. Groundwater is, is ten years is, is a long time. And when we look at these, the Sentinel wells are currently already in place for that well, the well that really exists. We have Sentinel wells right there, right now, already ready to look at the, the future of that, of that site. And we also have proposed Sentinel wells on the south side. We're almost finished, sorry.
Yeah, I will share that you're at about ten minutes left of your presentation time, total.
Okay, I'm, I'm moving. So gravel pits, if they're an issue, they're a real, they, everyone should be concerned because gravel pits are next to a lot of the public water supplies in this county. This shows the gravel pits that are in the southern part of the county and the wells that are right next to them. Right next to them, hundred, two, three, few hundred feet. So no monitor, right now, no monitoring is required, no models are required, no study or assessment and no contamination really is known from these actual existing pits and ponds that are across the river. The conclusions that we've reached are these. That the environmental risk of removing your gravel is very small. When compared to the risk of existing land uses, Sentinel wells increase insight and enhance safety. That's what we've already established, put in place. This review process that we, I just outlined, is really a good thing. This, this, where the gravel operator responded to a request. And I just want to point to the last one. There's no basis, other than conjecture, to say that this proposed project, including the monitoring wells, poses a risk to drinking water. This is from all of my experience in this field and thank you very much. And I would like to introduce William D. Otto Spence Real Estate. Otto Spence is the owner and he's going to highlight the impact study that he completed. Thank you.
Mr. Spence and, and Mr. Skelton, I'd just like to get to know that there's about eight minutes left of total presentation time.
Hello, good afternoon. I am Otto Spence, William D. Otto Spence Real Estate. We are an appraisal firm that handles real estate conditions all over the United States. We have handled the Trans Canada Pipeline- We have handled the Trans-Canada Pipeline on doing impact studies on that. We have worked from Rapid City, South Dakota, to Beaver, West Virginia, to be able to do feasibility studies and market studies and highest and best use studies. I was asked by the Beaver Corporation to look at the property that is in question that we're talking about today, to see if there were any issues that dealt with a negative influence on property values. And that was what my issue was, to go in and see what the mixture of how the highest and best use would fit together for this, as it would fit in to the properties and its surrounding influence. And I want to say right up front and strongly that we saw no influence of any type of negative influence of value by the operation of this property as it has been proposed. We ended up putting out a survey of all the properties that were in the area. We had put out about 640 individual surveys. We got about 43, 43% of response back, and that is, was astronomical. I was happy about that. We got that response back that was 277, and that was from telephone, from mailings, from emails. And I am a licensed appraiser in the state of Indiana. I am, I have the credentials that equal to the commercial and residential. I'm a certified EMAI, which is by the Appraisal Institute. It's the highest ranking association of appraisers in the country. I have an undergraduate degree in real estate. I have a master's in real estate appraising. During this period of time, I have done advanced analysis on site locations through these periods of time, and as far as you'll hear from some of my other associates through this, through upcoming. I look at this property as a wonderful remake of about 50.85 acres that are part of this property. Can I get the next slide brought through? The next couple of slides brought through? Okay. All right. Here, here is a view of the property, and you'll, you'll see it by the light shaded area. And as far as, we look over to the very left of this property, we see a dark edge that comes down the side. That is the 11 acres, 10 acres, 11 acres that are being given at the beginning of this process to add to the park system. And what you can see from this is, is that there is 20 acres down to the bottom of this that is at the back of Allison Trails. It's a subdivision that is not being maintained. It is overgrown, and it is providing no purpose or the highest and best use besides holding the earth together at this point. But whenever you add this 11 acres into this, you really see a combined functional increase in use of about 30 acres. Because now, the Parks Department can be able to have access to this property, and also with the gift they're being given, the right to have an ease, but to bring their equipment to come in down into this lower area to be able to maintain that and get that ready for that use.
You're at a four-minute warning.
Four-minute warning. Well, okay. Well, I have, like I said, we completed the impact study. I spent three full days. Okay, all right. I, I spent three days at this property. I have experienced the traffic, the routes. It should be pointed out that the roadway of Allison Road here has a 90-foot right-of-way to be able to be used, and that is not being pointed out at this point. Okay? I need to cut my presentation short at this point, and I need to introduce Mr. Anthony Hemsley.
Chris Stice.
Oh, Chris. All right. I'm introducing Chris Stice, the Parks Department.
Chris, you've got three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Okay, fastest three minutes I've ever had, right? Okay. Again, my name is Chris Stice. I'm the Parks Director for Hamilton County Parks. Denise has already briefed you on the resolution since our planning commission presentation of the support from the Hamilton County Commissioners and the Hamilton County Parks Board. We are committed to make this happen. We want to make this a world-class facility in Noblesville. Hamilton County is going to do it the right way and support our community like none other. So, real quick here.
Just keep talking.
All right, keep talking. Okay, just so everybody knows, you've seen the overall master plan of the entire park. And what's important here, real quick, is we will be adding three miles of trail to this system over the duration of this. At Phase One, we will add one mile of trail. We're ready to start as soon as we get authorization. We're ready to go. We have the money in place, we're ready to start the design and the development today. Now, we've just heard, just the other day, I think it was yesterday, in the Indy Star, American Rescue Plan has now had about $25 million that will open up grants January, or July 1st through August 1st. That's a very short window to submit some conservation grants. This is a perfect opportunity to submit, a grant opportunity to get more money generated in this Phase One for this. It is important as part of Phase One, and to identify from the state, this is identified, Hamilton County is a critical state for parklands. We need more parkland as we continue to develop our community. And as I move really, really fast through here, we are going to be doing five phases of this park development. And some of those phases, as we've identified in Phase One, we will be adding a canoe and kayak launch due to the high demand, going from 7,000 launches to over 21,000 launches over the last two years annually because of the demand and access to White River. This is a density issue at Potter's Bridge, and we need to help change the use pattern at Potter's Bridge. Another thing in Phase One that's really cool, excuse me, I already went to Phase Two, but we will be incorporating a nature-art trail as part of this. We will work with local artists to create a nature-art trail specific for Noblesville and Hamilton County and Potter's Bridge Park, which will be unique to this area. Some of the other items, we would be expanding the Riparian Corridor as well as the natural resources, and then the Habitat, expanding the trail system throughout the lake.
You've hit your 30 minutes.
Am I done? Okay, wrap up. And, and in closing, I'm going to wrap this up real quick, and in closing, is this overview of the entire park system, we would add trail systems that would connect into Allisonville. So, this is a positive opportunity that is second to none, and opportunities like this do not land at our doorstep to get donated a park of this size that is surrounded and owned by Hamilton County Parks on three sides. This reminds me of an opportunity that was taken back in New York City at Central Park, those visionaries. And here we are, 150 years displaced from that. What will our community look like in 150 years? And what decisions do we make today will make an impact 150 years from today?
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Sorry.
So, I have request speak cards from some other people who are in favor of this project, so I thought I would call them up, and then we will move to the cards, the people who would like to speak against the project. So, the first card I have is from the Hamilton County Council. I don't know who from the council's going to speak. And you have three minutes.
I won't, I won't use it all. Good evening, councilors. I'm Brad Beaver. I'm from the Hamilton County Council. I was at part of the plan commission meeting. It seemed to be some concern about funding for this particular one, so I thought I'd come tonight. It looks like it's already been addressed. You've got a letter of, of support from the county commissioners, you've got the support of the county council. That in and of itself will pay for the park. Then you've got a letter of support from the Parks Director and the Board of Directors from the Parks Department. So, I'll just finish with this. If you imagine a citizen looking at their property tax bill, the county has a line item there, county tax. Call it the county levy. Inside the county levy, we have two or three departments that have their own tax rate. The Parks Department is one of them. Parks Department, Health Department, Solid Waste, they have a tax rate inside our levy. It's 2.02, so that's two cents on every dollar. In fiscal year '21, it raised $5.1 million directly to the Parks Department. They have the resources to pay for this park. At the plan commission meeting, Chris said he would rejuggle his priority list to make sure this got paid for. He has the funds to rejiggle his funds. And with that tax rate, they have bonding capability. So, if you approve it, it'll get paid for.
Thank you very much. Next is Douglas Grant.
My name's Douglas Grant. I'm at 604 Kent Drive, New Albany, Indiana, and I'm with William D. Otto Spence, Real Estate. I want to bring your attention to a few things we dealt with as we looked at this. We looked at the market, several market comparables. We actually looked at six of them. I don't have my screen, but it was Kingswood, Straw Town, Perkins Community, Lock Haven, Canal Place, and Highland and Stone Creek. As we looked at them, we asked the question of the residents who were there. We did interviews with multiple residents. I've only selected a few of them, but based upon time of what we heard, they were majoritely, majoritarily positive. We did have a couple that were negative, but they were based upon blasting that really didn't fit into this market. Local residents asked, that was a member of the Homeowner Association in Kingswood, said they worked very closely with the sand and gravel pit to make sure there are no problems. When asked about dust, noise, and adverse conditions caused by sand and gravel, they had none, and the operators, they were very happy with what was going. There were none of these issues. Overall, the owners were very pleased with the relationship of that sand and gravel. We spoke to people in Straw Town, very close to where the Beaver project will be. They said they keep their commercial trucks covered, they're in good condition, they do not have a problem with them being a neighbor, and consider them a good neighbor. There's almost no noise. The noise in the common vehicle traffic on South, on SR 37 is greater than the operational noise in the working. The road frontage of their site is clean, and they are a silent neighbor. Perkins Community, market comparable number three. Originally, the people that we talked to opposed their sand and gravel pit. However, the city of Anderson ignored them, and almost five years ago, and five years have passed, there's been no problems of dust, noise, dangerous swimming conditions, flooding, never occurred. One lady said, my father spent his life opposing the sand and gravel pit for the conditions that never happened. I do not hear them in any manner. My final one is interview with Lock Haven. It was market comparable four. Very positive. We wanted to be here. There's no more dust or disturbance than an active construction site. It isn't really noticed, even depending on the wind direction. The individual was very clear that the proximity and activity of the mural processing facility, this is a processing facility which won't be at the Beaver site, was not seen as a negative when making the decision to purchase their home. Overall, as we examined the market comparables in that area, we saw most of the participants that we spoke to, and I wish I could remember exactly how the name was, I believe it was close to about 100 participants that we spoke to. I'm not sure on that number, so please don't quote me on that, in that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next card in favor, or last card in favor, is Zach Couch.
Zach Couch with William D. Otto Spence, Real Estate as well. Mr. Spence, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Mr. Spence alluded to some of the more logistical aspects of the report that he provided. One of the things we're going to go over today is linear regression modeling. We utilized linear regression modeling to really get down into the weeds of, do we see changes or influence in value based on proximity to sand and gravel? So, is the, are the slides up here? They're not? Okay. Y'all have to bear with me down on the numbers. The linear regression models we did covered, I believe, six of the, what, six neighborhoods. All six neighborhoods showed the same results. Looking through here, just to give you a quick example, one of the markets that we looked at, 222 sales were analyzed from 2016 to 2020. This neighborhood had sand and gravel removal ongoing from basically the 1950s up to 2019. So, it covered the entire time of the sales that we were looking at. The market factor of entrance was proximity to a quarry. The correction factors were structure, age, market condition, structure size, and waterfront. Significance levels or P-value was .05. In looking through that, and we all know when we're looking at ideas of what contributes value to residential homes, how big's the property? How big is the square footage of the actual home that resides on? Then the things we looked at were structure, age, and market condition. All of those, as you'd imagine, fit well within the model with a P-value of .05. And just to refresh, as you get closer to zero, your confidence increases in the numbers that we received. Market conditions, all of these were to the negative power .06 to negative 35. So, that's 0.35 zeros, high significance. The interesting thing in the summary here that I will show you is, actually, if we had structures that had waterfront on a sand and gravel pit, the property values increased. These were considered waterfront properties by the marketplace. They had an increase in sale price. Once you got to these zones of anywhere from 1,000 feet or less from the quarry, as long as it wasn't waterfront, or 1,000 to 2,000 feet and 2,000 feet beyond, there was no correlation within the model of sale price versus quarry proximity. So, essentially, in summary, trying to wrap up, despite ongoing mining until 2019, no impact value could be discerned for houses more than basically waterfront and beyond. There was no difference in sale price. The constructed linear regression model had excellent fit, meaning the factors that we utilized.
You're right. You're at your limit.
Okay, thank you.
The next group is with the Don't Leave Beaver group, and it's the presentation. So, the first person I have is Shelley Thomas.
I'm not sure where to find the.
I want to give them just a moment to get their presentation up.
Can we get your IT help to help us bring up the presentation? Or do you know where it is?
If not, I can go with that, but I would prefer to do.
Can you guys start it? Can you open it?
What's it called?
What's it called? It's called New Red.
You will hear from speakers this evening.
Ms. Thomas, would you please give your name and your ID?
Oh, I will. That was going to be next, but we'll start there. I am Shelley Thomas. I live in District Two in the Oak Bay subdivision. I live in District Two in the Oak Bay subdivision. You will hear from speakers this evening on their concerns in the noted areas. I won't bother you by listing those. As of Sunday, there were 1,764 signatures on the petition against the gravel pit, both in person and online. Citizen engagement has remained very high. We've seen a 35% increase in signatures since the plan commission's unfavorable recommendation a month ago. People are still opposed. Let's take a look at how those signatures break down. Three-fourths belong to Indiana residents. 63% apply to Hamilton County residents, and 51% reside in Noblesville. This is very clearly not a "not in my backyard" issue. Let's look a little more deeply into the Noblesville signatures. You can see that almost a third of the signatures are coming from individuals that live outside of the impacted zip code. I happen to be one of those. Eyes are on this. Individuals are watching. They're very interested in what the common council decides this month. The media is engaged and watching the live stream this evening. Whatever decision is reached, the community and central Indiana will remember. And before I pass this along, we are an informed public with multiple doctoral degrees among us. We have invested seriously. We have consulted environmental firms. We have pored over the 120-plus pages of public filing documents, and we've supplemented all of that with a review of published academic and medical research.
You're at your time.
And on that note, I'll pass it off to David Pagel. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening. My name is David Pagel. I reside at 9631 Crescent Oaks Drive here in Noblesville, and I'm a proud 30-year resident of Noblesville. From a zoning perspective, there are at least two things wrong with this application. The first is the request to perform stone processing activities in an R5 district. You know, this is not allowed in any other R5 district here in Noblesville. It's definitely not allowed near other residential districts as a matter of protection and safety where our families and our children live, eat, and sleep. The reasons are obvious. Even the applicant concedes in their application because they're requesting restrictions, though none of their suggestions do enough to mitigate the true risk to the community. The current R2 restrictions on the property are the best ones because stone processing activities are absolutely not allowed. The second issue is calling this activity "park building." Who are we trying to kid here? Mining sand and gravel is an industrial activity, and it presents risks to our community. It's not building a park. Please ask yourself, why is a lake needed for the park when the White River is nearby, or quite simply, a lake or any water feature is not needed for any park to make a park? And I know that to be true because just today, in the electronic version of the current, they talked about 107 acres by the county parks commission at 216 and Hinkle, and you know what? That 2.2 million purchase and all the 107 acres? No lake. Must not be needed. This application is nothing more than manipulation of the UDO. Everyone understands that you cannot do something indirectly that you are directly prohibited from doing. Do I get to do absolutely anything I want in this town as long as I promise to confer some benefit to somebody in, like, the city in the future? Your answer to me is, "That's a big no, Dave." The promise of a park is nothing more than an enticement to get the city to violate your own rules. Do you really want the PD district to become a method to circumvent the sound policy contained in the current UDO? Do all future commercial enterprises get to use a planned development district for incompatible property use near residential districts, provided they promise to confer a future public benefit? Your answer better be no. There are other conflicts with the UDO. For obvious reasons, residential districts are the most restricted and protected in the UDO.
You're at your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Sherman. I live at 9545 Northern Oaks Court here in Noblesville. I'm a tax and investment advisor, and in that role, I provide financial planning and risk management for individuals and businesses here in town. Tonight, I want to speak to you as fellow advisors, since I think our roles are actually very similar. You're being asked to consider significant investment. How do you make that decision? First, before any investment can ever be recommended to any client, you've got to get to know that client and especially their risk profile. So why is a risk profile so important? Because that profile determines what you should and should not recommend. For instance, if your client's cautious, their resources are limited, then your focus must be to eliminate risk, protect their assets. Think CDs, not a volatile stock market. In this case, risk and losses must be avoided. But if your client is not as cautious, and some losses can be tolerated, then we make certain that the rewards, the upside, is well better than the risks that are presented. And if your client can sustain a significant loss, then an aggressive, risky approach may warrant consideration. Now, risk is not automatically, the slide that I was going through, is not automatically a problem, especially if it's acknowledged, respected, and properly managed. In addition, risk needs to be managed before there's an issue. Now, this is probably obvious, so why are we addressing it? Because we don't believe that the Beaver proposal has fully acknowledged, fully assessed, or planned for many potential risks. Why do we conclude that? We asked Beaver Materials at the May 5th committee meeting, which of their prior gravel pits was most like Potter's Bridge? They said Katiwi. But there are stark differences between the alleged similar sites. Those differences significantly impact and increase the potential risk to residents and to the water supply. In the same meeting, we asked Beaver, what's the biggest challenges presented to them by this project? Their response, "We don't really know. It will be very straightforward. Maybe a machine will eke oil. We can't think of other problems." These responses indicate that appropriate risk assessment and proactive risk management simply are not fully part of their proposed plan. So how should you recommend your client? We believe the health of Noblesville residents and the Hamilton County water resources are precious and require protection, no risk. We believe the upside does not begin to outweigh the risks.
You're at your time.
We believe you should walk away.
Madam President and members of the council, my name is Dr. Rachel Walker. I am principal geologist with Mondell and Associates, an environmental consulting firm located at 110 South Downey Avenue, Indianapolis. We have previously provided an assessment of the proposed project to the Don't Leave It To Beaver community group. Mondell is currently the contractor for the city of Indianapolis to assess new wellfield construction in Marion County, and they've performed in that role for over 20 years. I would like to highlight some of the remaining concerns with the project that we think is still outstanding. First is removal of the protective clay layer over the aquifer. Thank you. Removal of protective clay layer will always raise the risk of aquifer susceptibility contamination, which is a concern because this project is located within an active wellhead protection area as it stands now. Details provided for the mine pit design seem to be lacking and changing. As of the last information I had, the applicant noted there would be a 10- to 12-acre pit within a 30-acre disturbed area. Clarification is really needed on what disturbed area means. Does it mean removing more of that shallow clay? Also, the final depth of the pit itself has implications for potentially penetrating that deeper clay layer, which protects deeper parts of the aquifer. Mine operation and spill management plan details are lacking. While it is noted that no sorting, washing, or maintenance of equipment would occur on site, it seems unlikely that a dredge or an excavator would be always removed from site for refueling or maintenance. And while the applicant notes that they will use best management practices with regards to managing the situation, a detailed spill prevention and emergency response plan that is specific to the site and details those tools and practices that would be used should have been part of this application. A monitoring well program is a very important tool to potentially limit the release, limit a release once it occurs. Intera's report recommended at least two wells, and that's great, but the finite details for that plan is still seem to be lacking, including the total number of wells, how often they would be sampled, what compounds they would be sampled for, and who would those results be made available to for assessment. Post-mining filling and construction risks don't appear to have been addressed yet. Yes, that part of the project may be more than seven years into the future. However, Mondell has had experience with at least two examples of contaminated fill within Marion County wellfield construction sites. So this is a very real risk. If you get contaminated fill being introduced to the site, there is a potential for contamination to enter the groundwater in the area. So I believe that this is something that needs to be addressed, and right now, applicants for construction in Marion County have to address that if they're bringing fill on site. Mondell respectfully recommends that the information that addresses these gaps and these concerns be solicited by the council so that you can make the most fully informed decision that is protective of a very critical resource for Hamilton County and Noblesville. Thank you.
That's pretty good timing.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Kevin Maloney of 19300 Allisonville Road. Following the last proposal, Beaver Materials belatedly commissioned the hydrology report you have heard about tonight. In order to start that report, Intera would have needed to know the expected excavation size from Beaver Materials. Intera's report states an excavation of 12 acres. But before the report was delivered in September, and for eight months afterwards, Beaver Materials repeatedly said in their information and in the media that the size would be 30 acres. Then, just before the planning commission meeting, their own website for the project changed from 30 acres to 12. Considering the detailed data provided by their analysts tonight, they seem to not have a handle on the most important detail of their own project, or they're leaving it intentionally fuzzy. Do they actually have a plan for what and where they will dig? Or are they playing a shell game with important data in order to get approval at all costs before just mining as far, deep, and wide as serves the profit margin? Exceeding the specifications in Intera's hydrogeology report would invalidate that report, bringing new risk to the community. If that report is calculated and modeled for a 12-acre excavation, then the project proposal cannot exceed the strict definition of that size. This ordinance does not specify size at all, which would allow Beaver Materials to put the water supply at risk. Most troubling, however, is that Beaver Materials wants to trade land for an ordinance. They call it a donation, but what they're seeking is a quid pro quo or a pay-to-play. Although the exchange of land for the ordinance is clear throughout the proposal and Ms. Ashelman's analysis, it is most bold in this line, delivered by Mr. Dowdson in the planning commission meeting and restated in the current newspaper, 10 acres would be donated to the park immediately after approval. Conditionality like this makes this a pay-to-play. For government contracts, this is illegal in 15 states and the federal government, including in some government departments in the state of Indiana. Whether the specific circumstance is legal or not, it is clearly unethical. As you know, just because something is not legally prohibited, or whether or not it is intentional, that does not make it right. Like the planning commission already did, you have the opportunity here to show that the city will not be drawn into a questionable exchange of laws.
You're at your limit.
Thank you.
Madam President, I obviously don't want to interrupt the public as they speak, but when I hear things like quid pro quo and things coming out, I just want this council to be clear that what we're doing tonight is not in any way, shape, or form, your action is not in any way, shape, or form illegal from my analysis. You're considering a proposal that's before you, and that there's been no money offered to this council, to the city, or in any way, shape, or form for you to do something tonight. So I just want to make the record clear that I do not believe this is a pay-to-play situation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
My name is Michelle Reel. I live at 6725 Apperson Drive, Noblesville, and I am presenting some of our traffic concerns. Here are a few things we know about the current traffic flow on Allison Road. It is a narrow two-lane road with no berms on either side. It has a blind curb beginning at Potter's Bridge and ends 398 feet from the current entrance of the property. There are 3,000 vehicles, including 44 dump trucks, traveling up and down Allisonville today. To exit the site, dump trucks will go south towards its processing plan. In this drawing provided by GHD, the company hired by Beaver Materials, the required acceleration lane going south is shown to be 100 feet long. However, in this drawing shared on May 16th, there is not an acceleration lane going south. A fully loaded dump truck will need at least 500 feet to reach the designated speed for this area. The 500 feet were provided to me from GHD and is an industry standard. At the plan commission meeting, it was confirmed that the route from the proposed extraction site is south on Allisonville Road to Field Drive, west over the river, south on State Road 19, west on State Road 3238 to River Road. To dig 12 acres in five years, the number of dump trucks will go from 44 a day to 98, which is an increase of 123%. To dig 30 acres in five years, traffic will increase by 300%. I know the petitioner stresses that they will only use their trucks, and they have 15 trucks, but it's not about the number of trucks. It's about the number of trips. This increase will not just happen on Allisonville Road. It will happen on Field Drive. It will happen on State Road 19, and it will happen on State Road 38 and 32, and at the new roundabout, the entrance of the Riverview Hospital Emergency Room. Will this new roundabout be able to safely handle this increase of dump truck traffic? Here are some examples of documents submitted for this proposal. Note the date on the preliminary concept, November 11, 2020. In November 2020, the proposal, proposed gravel pit size was 30. The 2022 future rendering of the Rock to Recreation website shows a lake and other ponds for which dimensions have not been provided. In June 2022 Noblesville, a town post-network publication, an article was published with what appears to be about the same preliminary concept from November 2020, except it states that the concept is January 2022. If the gravel pit is supposed to be 12 acres, shouldn't this new park lake be half the size in this new drawing? This is very confusing and misleading. Again, is this gravel pit going to be 30 acres or 12? Is the city of Noblesville prepared to monitor the industrial operation to ensure the size of the gravel pit does not go over the 12 acres to minimize the risk to our water? Please vote "no" to this proposal.
Hello. My name is Cindy Welch, and I live at 1080 Greenfield Avenue in Noblesville. We appreciate the petitioner provided a noise and dust study in their latest public filing. Let's talk about the noise portion. In their document, you can see hotspot sound ranges. They are close to the entrance and exit and near the active equipment areas. A good port... A good portion of the report talks about noise averages, but what really matters in the eyes of city law are noise readings and their duration. The study cited equipment sound levels from the Federal Transit Administration. There's a major piece missing in the report that will affect residents and parkgoers. That's dump trucks. We referenced the same source, the Federal Transit Administration, and found the measurement for trucks and calculated the levels across distance. In 2020, we worked with a state licensed professional engineer that measured sounds from the road as well as currently operating Beaver's material gravel pit sites. Last time, our study's veracity was called into question. But we've got some good news. Our numbers were consistent with those provided by the Federal Transit Administration. Where are we going with this? The petitioner's sound study appears to reference the wrong city's ordinance. Their study referenced ordinance number 9-93.24, which applies to this highlighted section of the map. This ordinance has a construction noise exemption, which their agency cites as a reason their noise levels would be acceptable. But the project site is all the way up here. That ordinance and the exemptions do not apply. Here's the correct one, 93.25. It's a lot of text. What's important? Sound levels don't have to be continuous, they just have to happen for more than five minutes within 15 minutes a time. Here's what the noise level should never exceed according to that corrected ordinance. So take a look at the numbers Beaver's Materials has given us. The hotspot entrance and the exit to the Potter's Bridge site would be the closest to residential homes, and the hotspot active equipment area would be the closest to the public park. These levels indicate they would violate the ordinance even in an industrial zone. According to their own numbers, they violate city noise ordinances. It's clear that more due diligence needs to be done, and we haven't even talked about truck reversal backup beach. Vote no on the gravel pit. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Jo Bergerie. I live at 19469 Potter's Bridge Road, and I've been a resident of Noblesville for 36 years. Our concerns are for air quality, specifically dust that is inhaled and is invisible to the naked eye. Our natural defenses help us to cough or sneeze some coarse particles out of our bodies. However, these defenses do not keep out ultrafine particles. These particles get trapped in our lungs, while the smallest are so minute that they can pass through the lungs into our bloodstream. You are at risk of breathing in silica dust, a known carcinogen, if you live, work, or play near crushing, loading, hauling, or dumping of rock. Remember, silica dust is 100 times smaller than a grain of sand. You can be breathing it in without ever knowing. Mining operations are among the activities that produce particles. Peaks or spikes in particles can last from hours to days. Even low levels of particles can be deadly, even in places that met current standards for short-term particle pollution. People inhale many of these pollutants in the air where they live. Because these pollutants are airborne, they can settle into the water that we drink, eat them in the fish that we catch, and settle into the dirt and grass that our children play in. Unless you are wetting down the trucks, roads, and site 24/7, once the mud dries, it turns back into dust. Item cited Beaver Materials for fugitive dust in 2017, 18, and 19. Wind also plays a factor in just how far these particles travel. Winds at just over three miles an hour, you are covering the closest six neighborhoods. At six miles an hour, it reaches most of our schools and athletic fields. At 15 miles an hour, all of Noblesville will be covered. In 2019, the EPA concluded fine particle pollution poses serious health threats. Cardiovascular and respiratory harm, cancer, harm to the nervous system, reproductive and developmental harm. Beaver's Material Own Safety Data Sheet, I'm a little bit behind here, shows natural sand and gravel mining may cause cancer, respiratory irritation, and damage to organs. Their employees are told to wear protective equipment.
Your time's up, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Olivia DeSalvo, and my address is 19438 Potter's Bridge Road. I have been very fortunate to call Noblesville my home for 20 years now. Welcome to the historic city of Noblesville. These are the views newcomers will see as they enter Noblesville from the north at Straw Town. If you vote yes today, this will be another eyesore just a few miles south as you travel to our historic Noblesville. Is this how we want to welcome folks into our community? People from all over the state come to see Potter's Bridge. It is the only remaining covered bridge in Hamilton County. With this landmark and the discovery of the park, our community continues to grow and flourish. Indiana Cover Bridge Society is opposed to this petition. Andy Redman, president, says the park allows people with limited mobility access to the park. The gravel pit's noise, dust, and traffic will take away from the park. The dust will deteriorate the paint on the bridge and leave an unsightly condition and cause more frequent maintenance and painting. The All Trails website rated the Potter's Bridge Trail a 4.5 out of 5 stars. I spent my childhood learning to ride my bike on this trail, and I trained for my half marathon on this trail. I love it. Comments on the trail include "very quiet, beautiful trail to downtown Noblesville", "nice, quiet ride, relaxing, gorgeous views, sights, or sounds and sightings of wildlife", "safe, solitude, and it's peaceful". This is at the half-mile marker on the trail along the gravel pit, and the view changes from this to this. We won't just lose the park's serenity, we will lose visitors and their commerce with the city. People are craving an outdoor living space. During COVID, this park was a saving grace for the community. Potter's Bridge Park is home to deer, nesting eagles, hawks, foxes, and Fishville River. During five years of industrial activity, that is bound to change. And after all that time, the park will be yet more isolated from wildlife corridors impending their return. This wildlife is an important draw and a source of peace that the park provides. In a quote from Mr. Costu, "For most of history, man has had to fight nature to survive. In this century, he is beginning to realize that in order to survive, he must protect it." Say no to this project and start protecting. Beaver Materials is not an advocate of the community. If they wanted to give to the community, then give. Don't disguise an industrial operation in a historic residential community as generosity. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Hello, my name is Jack Tharp. I live at 19460 Whispering Woods Court. I've been a Noblesville resident for 32 years. I'm retired from Indiana University. There is no broad-based community support for this project. American Water does not support this project. This request for rezoning is predicated on the need to build a lake. The county parks 123-page master plan, which I've read, makes no mention of a need for another lake. The county parks have absolutely no data, i.e. user surveys showing demand for a park lake. Park users want trails, natural areas, green space, that's the middle one, excuse me, the no lakes right up there in the middle. They want playgrounds, they don't want a lake. Note this list of county parks' priorities. There is no mention of a planned lake at Potter's Bridge. Parks Director Chris Styes has stated the cost of creating a gravel pit lake is estimated at $12 million. You think for one minute if county parks own this 50 acres today, $12 million would be appropriated by the build-out of a lake? I doubt it. We can ask Mr. Brad Beaver that later. A letter submitted by County Council President Stephen Schwartz supports a land donation. He mentions nothing about a lake. A lake at the 50-acre site is actually a liability. It will be a source of collecting contaminants. County Parks needs no donation, they need to stand tall and offer to purchase the land they want. This is the first time American Water has had the prospect of mining near their wells. They do not support this project. In their letter of March 29th, they shift the decision-making accountability to the city via the Planning Department. Intera's study with an assessment of low risk is based upon pro forma assumptions. Yet the study reveals that contaminants can take three to seven years to reach wells, and to be the first in the state to deploy a monitoring system is in reality an experiment. Who's going to monitor the monitoring system after Mr. Beaver exits? See this citation from Intera? Could mitigate risk? That's kind of scary to me. It means uncertain. And there is no roadmap or plan in place for remediation if contamination occurs. Please note what the Intera consultant said about the Sentinel Wells. The effectiveness of the monitoring system was never analyzed. That's not reassuring. This is not park building, it's profit-making, venture, pure and simple. The petitioner's request for mining where prohibited is consequential to citizens. I ask council members to contemplate, if you haven't already, what if contamination occurs seven years out after Mr. Beaver has exited? American Water customers most likely will pay for the cleanup via a rate hike. And the questions begin: who, what, why? Why was mining permitted near existing wells? There's no upside to this project, especially for the leaders of our city. We ask you vote no. Thank you.
The next card I have is from Lisa Lee.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Lisa Lee, 9346 Rockwood Court. I have been a resident of Noblesville for 22 years. We live in Potter's Bridge. My husband and I decided to move here because of the nice, close proximity to the park, the schools, and the river. So we've loved it here. I've been a physical therapist for 35 years, 27 of them here at Noblesville. I have become very familiar with the rise of many environmentally induced conditions, health conditions in this area, primarily cancer, COPD, asthma, and various autoimmune diseases. I am here today to express my concern if this gravel pit proposal is approved. The increase in diesel emissions alone from the trucks and equipment will add to the health hazard in our community even for the proposed five years. A quote from a physician letter in Salida Daily Post in Colorado stated that diesel engine exhaust is a carcinogen and more toxic than gasoline vehicle exhaust. Long-term exposure to even low levels of diesel exhaust raises the risk of dying from lung cancer by 50% for residents who live near the operational site. And as we know, cancer is one of our main pillars at the hospital I work at. According to the EPA, the increased heavy truck traffic and extraction machinery will pose pollutant emission risk. The stop-and-go traffic operation will also increase pollutant emissions. And depending on the wind speeds, it can adversely affect 80 families that live in proximity to where they're going to be doing the extraction. And this is called the truck air pollution travel radius. My hope today is that you will consider voting against this gravel pit proposal based on the scientific evidence and proven health effects. Our community will not benefit from this, and actually will suffer greatly in the long run. I look forward to sharing this amazing place with my grandchildren someday. This has always been a beautiful place to live and a place I call home, and I would love to keep it that way. Thanks for your time.
Next is Carl Lee, and then after Carl, it is Bruce H E O R A R. Sorry. Bruce Nakar, sorry. Carl then Bruce.
My name is Carl Lee, 9346 Rockwood Court. I was going to pass, but they brought up something that I've been thinking about. It's the roads, okay? They're going to widen the road both ways, right? So traffic can get through. So when they're going south, let's say, no, they're going south, basically, there's going to be a lane that is going to come up, basically, in my backyard. There are 10 homes on that side, what would be the east side of Potter's Wood, okay? And they're saying 90 feet of this, okay, is owned by the city. But that can't, there's no way, 30 yards, I know where my property line is, okay? But there's trees, there's hundreds and hundreds of trees that are within, I'd say, 10 yards, 15 yards of the road now. So they're going to have to take down all those trees, literally hundreds of trees, if you're going to build, because you're going to have to have the road that's 10 feet. You're going to have to have a ditch that's another 15 feet, right? For the water to run off, and the trees are right there, okay? So you're literally going to have to take down, I don't know, it's something to look into, just exactly where this road's going in proximity with, there's hundreds of trees, and some of them have been there for hundreds of years, okay? But it's something that, it's just another unanswered question. Thank you.
After Bruce, I have Tony Wade.
My name is Bruce Nakar. I live at 21239 Claire Avenue. I'm a lifelong resident of Noblesville. Born and raised here, went to school here, except for college where I was at Muncie. Always close proximity to White River, by the way. Potter's Bridge is extremely important to me, I grew up there. And I derive a lot of my wildlife artwork from that, I am an artist. I can tell you one thing that has bothered me, we refer to this quote-unquote gravel pit as a lake. It is not a lake, a gravel pit is a dead hole. It does not, does not support life. This county's been pockmarked by these, we don't need any more of those. And also, I've noticed that it's going to be five years, but now it looks like seven years, it seems to be kind of pushed up. This will devastate Potter's Bridge Park and that river corridor. And I can tell you, now, this is not redundant, I wanted to show you again, I know that this is one of my favorite birds, a northern bobwhite, and it's in that era, and it's gone. Also, a wonderful bird, and it lives in that very area, and it will be gone because of this gravel pit, an eastern screech owl. It will be gone. And this is really upsetting to me. I've just been able to find an American woodcock, and they're, these are pretty rare, and I haven't seen them almost my whole life. Now I have, in that very area. They're very hard to take care of, and they will be gone. Thank you.
Next we have Tony Wade, and then after Tony, Larry Prang.
Good evening. My name is Tony Wade. I do live at 19700 Heather Lane with my husband Terry. We have been, he is a lifelong Noblesville resident. He met me in Indianapolis, and we have lived here for over 30 years. I am concerned about the emissions from the diesel fuel, but I'm not going to go there, because it's already been addressed by Lisa Lee and also by Ms. Bergerie. What I do want to point out is that everything that they spoke of can be found in an article from the American Lung Association. I had looked at that and was going to talk to you about all of that, so I don't need to do that now, but I would ask you to please read the article. It is a 2019 article that It is a 2019 article that addresses all of the concerns that have been talked to you here this evening about how it will affect people. I have COPD. That is cardiopulmonary lung disease. I know people who have lung cancer and are battling asthma, and this pollution will affect all of us, even people who do not have these issues. I'm going to please ask you to vote no. Thank you for your time.
After Larry Prang, we have Cindy Ariel.
Hello, I'm Larry Prang. I'm going to relinquish my time because the topic's been covered twice.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
After Cindy, we have Chris Prang.
Hi, I'm Cindy Ariel. I live at 19253 Potter's Bridge Road. I've been here five years, but how long I've been here should not affect someone that has lived here longer. I'm still a resident of Noblesville. Madam President and council members, I'm angry. I'm angry with Mr. Beaver for pushing forward with this project, knowing that it upsets so many residents and parkgoers. I'm angry at the Hamilton County Commissioners for their support. How many of them have to live next door to that? Why do they want to tell Noblesville what to do? Sorry. I'm most angry at the Hamilton County Parks and Mr. Stice for supporting this gravel pit. They are siding with Mr. Beaver because all they can see is the acreage, and I understand that part, but they're not seeing this lipstick-covered pig that we all can see. Potter's Bridge Park is a beautiful park that is used by thousands of people, and the tranquility will be lost. Hamilton County Park's own Facebook page has posts about, one, protecting White River, and two, protecting pollinators. On April 29th, they direct us to the Discover White River site, wonderful posts about the history and how to protect and enjoy the White River. On June 4th, they posted that they want us to take the pledge to protect pollinators from pesticides, habitat loss, and pests and disease. Habitat loss, isn't that exactly what would happen? Did they take their own pledge? They direct us to the Clear Choices Clean Water site, and again, tons of interesting posts on that site. Lastly, why are these acres so important that will not happen for years when just this past February, Hamilton County Parks was given 129 acres? What are the phases for bir oak bend? Why isn't Mr. Stice as excited about that land? He was so excited in February when he took the picture with his shovel and his smile with several Hamilton County officials. Everything Hamilton County Parks promotes on their site is a complete contradiction to the years of destruction this gravel pit entails. If Hamilton County Parks doesn't want to protect the habitat, who will? I'm counting on you, our common council. I want you to think of the hurt and sadness that all of us that live close by, the ones that enjoy the park, and the ones that enjoy the solitude of the river as they float along, will have to put up with for years. Please don't let Hamilton County officials sway the Noblesville Common Council, and I'm pleading with you to know that this pit within our city is not good at all. Please, all I can ask is for you to vote no.
Chris Prang. And then after Chris, I have Eric Gaben. I really apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name.
Hi, my name is Chris Prang, and two weeks ago, I stood up here and talked to you and told you a little bit about my husband and I living at our home at 19105 Allisonville Road. We've been there for 47 years. We've raised our kids there. We've enjoyed the beauty, the silence, the wildlife, the river, Potter's Woods. And I'm just asking you to put yourself in our place, and would you want your family and your kids growing up with a gravel pit down the street from you, with the noise, the air pollution, the traffic? So I'm just asking that you say no to this gravel pit. Thank you.
After Eric, I have Barbara Turk.
Good evening. My name is Eric Gaber. I live at 18993 Winston Court. I've been living in Noblesville for over 30 years. Nobody in this room, I think, has opposed more recreation. However, my objection to this project stems from the proposal to allow gravel extraction at the site and its adverse impacts on residents. Ronald Reagan once said, "Government's first duty is to protect the people." The members of this city council are the government, and this duty to protect the citizens is your responsibility, not his, not theirs, it's yours. Protecting people means strong environmental protection, public safety, among other activities. Residents who live around the gravel pit will be exposed to a wide range of airborne pollution, noise, and safety hazards, as well as a risk to the city's water supply. Some of these items have already been covered, but I will read an excerpt on the silica dust from the material safety data sheet from U.S. Silica Company, and also IMIs. It states, under label elements, danger, P260. And what does that read? Do not breathe dust. That's the silica dust. Why? Because once it gets in your lungs, you cannot get it out. It's not like coughing up dust or other things. The particles are so small, you can't get it out. They stay there forever. Pollution from diesel exhaust from trucks has been addressed as well. I worked for Caterpillar Tractor for 10 years on what? Diesel engines. There's 40 known carcinogens in diesel exhaust. I could rattle them all off here. The reason Caterpillar moved their engine plant out of East Peoria, way out to Mapleton, in the middle of nowhere, was so they could vent those diesel fumes out into the atmosphere and not hurt anybody. There's also water supply that they talked about. However, there have been problems with contamination plumes all over the country, Franklin, Indiana, the Amphenol Plant. Several years ago, Tucson City Water had to shut down 14 wells because of contamination plumes that all of a sudden appeared that weren't supposed to be there. So doing this gravel pit, we don't know what kind of effect it's going to have on it. I don't have any fancy slides or any analysis or stuff like that, but I can go online, I can find these examples. They exist. They've happened. People have died from it. The noise from the operation is going to be constant, no preparing to those residents surrounding the excavation. From my backyard, I could hear them constructing the tennis courts over on Field Drive. I can hear diesel trucks on 37. I can hear motorcycles. I can hear cars. And you're going to tell me that within less than a half a mile, that that's going to be a quiet operation? I don't think so.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Next is Barbara Turk, and then after Barbara is Brian Long.
Hi, I'm Barbara Turk. I live at 19287 Morrison Way in Noblesville. The reason I'm getting up to speak is mostly because of all of the information you got from Otto Spence and his associates tonight. The surveys that they did this year apparently were done in neighborhoods, some that I don't know about, but some of the neighborhoods were built with an existing gravel pit present at the time they started building them. The reference to Straw Town is totally incomparable to our area. It is along State Road 37, which is already very busy. I just don't think it's not inhabited like our area. The survey sent out by Otto Spence in 2020 that some of you are not aware of, one was placed on my doorstep. It had markings on it to indicate exactly where they left it, and I know that many neighbors in our area did not reply to that survey for that specific reason. So I'm just curious how relevant and appropriate the surveys that they did this time around are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brian Long, and then after Brian is Pam Wind.
Hi, my name is Brian Long. I live at 9615 Crescent Oaks Drive in Noblesville. I'd like to bring your attention to the methodology of the noise and dust study that was submitted by Beaver Materials. This study compared conditions at the Straw Town gravel pit to the conditions at the Potter Bridge site for a couple days in November 2020. This study was highly flawed and should not be used to dismiss the noise and dust pollution concerns because, first, the sampling period was extremely small, less than two days on each site for the noise study, and less than 1.5 days at each site for the dust study. Some of this data was even excluded due to a storm that came through. Second, the metering equipment was not reliable. There were failures to both the noise and dust meters. There was no explanation of what caused the failures, and these tests were not duplicated. Normally, one meter failure would not be a big deal if multiple meters were spread out throughout the site, but only one dust or noise meter was used at one time per site. It's easy for, it would have been easy for the pit equipment to avoid one meter during the short sampling period. There was no detailed description of the site or the weather during the study. How active was the sites? How many gravel pit vehicles were present? How windy was it? And the timing of some of these tests seemed questionable. On the Straw Town site, during one of the two-day studies for dust, the meter was only active for 1.5 hours, and this was primarily during the lunch hour. On one noise test at the Potter Bridge site, the meter was only active for eight hours during the workday. This is the noisiest part of the day. Noise meters at Straw Town were ran for 24 hours, including the quiet overnight hours. This skews the averages in favor of Straw Town. I ask you look at the raw data, not just the summary too of that study. The raw data shows that the noise levels at Straw Town did exceed the ordinance levels. And also, per the study, the noise levels within approximately 150 feet of the pit equipment will be above the noise ordinance limits. The pit equipment will be within 150, the people, 150 feet of the people that are beyond the existing White River Trail, and as the trucks drive back and forth through town, they will be within 150 feet of many people, and the burms along Allisonville Road will not do nothing to stop this noise. In conclusion, the dust and noise study is highly flawed. A valley study would have gone more in depth into the status of the sites and the weather on the days of the test. Would he use multiple evenly spaced meters on the site all at one time so the meters could not be dodged? A longer sampling period should have been used on both sites, and the same meter should have been set up on both sites at the same time apples should have been compared to apples. Thank you very much.
Pam Wind, and then the last one that I have is George Bell.
Hi, I'm Pam Wind. I live at 19061 Fairfield Boulevard. I was born in Noblesville, been a lifetime resident, and I've been at my home now for almost 30 years. I walk Potter's Woods every morning, and I'm here to tell you via my app, Merlin Bird Sounds on Gavin Tuesday morning, I got 19 separate bird sightings or sounds. Potter's Woods is a natural jewel. It is the finest stretch of nature preserve of its size anywhere in Hamilton County, and I've been everywhere in Hamilton County, and I don't understand why we're not marketing it as part of our image for hometown Indiana. I also would question why we're even considering revaluing guidelines, restrictions on construction to introduce an industrial process, a dangerous industrial process into residential neighbors. When people buy their homes, they count on their government to protect their rights to live in that home, and now I'm going to be living near gravel pit. I would not have purchased my home if I had known that was going to happen. I would ask all of you, before you make your final decision, and I hope you will decline, to ask yourself two questions. First off, why this location? White River has gravel everywhere. Why is Mr. Beaver willing to spend so much time and so much money to get this location to the detriment of the 500 families who live around this location? I would also ask you to take a morning walk or an afternoon walk along Potter's Woods and talk to the hundreds of people who bring their children there, their dogs, they jog, they walk, they push their strollers, so their children can actually see, touch, and hear wildlife. And I would beg you to help us preserve that. Thank you.
George Bell.
My name is George Bell. I live at 18761 Northview Place, and I've lived in Noblesville since 1976. And I want to thank you all for listening to this, and I don't, Mr. Beaver's just trying to do business. He's not evil, I don't believe, but it's just in the wrong place. If you have a question of what it's going to look like, drive down River Road and have a look. And there was someone that recently passed away in February, lived in Potter's Woods. He told me how much that his property would go down, and it was unbelievable. And I have another question too, as far as, why don't we have somebody from the Parks Department that wants to, like, have the stewardship of the path? That path is so beautiful, and I haven't heard anybody from the Parks Department, like, talk about, you know, defending that path, because if you look at that lake that they're going to put in, it's right by the path. I mean, they're going to be digging that during that period of time. So anyway, and if they really believe that the property values won't go down, why don't they build their, those properties that they talked about doing after they dig, if they build them before and try to sell them and see what they go for? So anyway, I really appreciate you guys coming here and listening to this, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, then we will give the petitioner an opportunity to respond to some of the comments that were made. You'll have a maximum of 10 minutes.
First, would like to, Chris Beaver, 16160 Cherry Tree Road, Noblesville, Indiana. I'd like to thank everybody in this room. I think tonight, we got to see how Noblesville government works, and it works to the best. Every person was treated fair and equal. I don't want to thank you for doing that. There's a lot of concerns about this project, but the main thing that I would like for everybody to know on this board is that being a Noblesville resident, it's something special. I think we saw it tonight with the passion and everything that everybody wants to do. I foremost am a Noblesville resident. I first looked at this property with Al Patterson and the Heinzman family, and I could not justify why my company would dig this property. There's not enough sand and gravel to justify the amount of money that I would spend and the pain that everybody would come across. After a while during the height of COVID, as I was driving home at, when I lived on Sunset Lane where my daughter lives now, I noticed that the park is the only thing that people had in Noblesville that they could go to. It was a place that was free. They could walk freely. They could be free, and they could just be who they wanted to be during COVID, because COVID had restricted this so hard. I realized then, there was a calling in my heart, that I could do something that would change this park to be the best park in the state of Indiana. I had the ability, I have the equipment, and I have the way to take this land, and as the people showed you with the, all the graphs, it is hard layers of mud. There's about 12 to 14 feet of gravel that I could take. That's not enough to cover my cost, so I personally bought this land so that I would not put hardship on my company, as I am the owner of Beaver Gravel, and I'm the president, but I also have employees, and I have to take care of them, employees, and I have to make sure I can pay them. And now I've come up with a plan through the park and through the government that we can fund this. I understand all the concerns that the neighbors have. I've hired the best experts to tell me the truth. The first thing I asked them when I hired them, I want the truth. If this can't happen, I won't do it. I have family members, I have aunts and uncles, I have family, personal family, my daughter. I have a lot of people living in this neighborhood. I personally would not do anything that would hurt anybody in this town. I am very passionate about this city and the county, and I've showed that in many ways, but I would never try to harm anybody. I have a list of concerns that I could help you with, but I just want you to know that I am truly trying to do the best thing for this community. I funded it. My company will fund it. It will be a $12 million donation to the Hamilton County Parks. $12 million is why the parks will use very little money from taxpayers to get this park done. Because of the land donation I give, they can go out and get all kinds of grants, and that's why this park will be amazing. That's why this park will have a 12-acre lake. I will dig 30 acres of land, but because it's in floodway, no dirt will leave the property. I will put that dirt back, and that's why it's a 12-acre lake. I will put that dirt back, and that's why it's a 12-acre lake. The equipment that I buy are all brand new. The state-of-the-art with pollution. I know pollution is bad, and I understand pollution, but these trucks are 20 to 22 in year. They are brand new. The loaders I have are state-of-the-art. The two people that I will have run this operation, John Rogers and Todd Ellis, have worked for me, one for 35 years and the other one for 31 years. I will make sure that I do what I say I'm gonna do. I will make sure that we follow all the protocols. I've been working in a wellhead protection since the early 90s, since Jack Rittman broke that policy. I understand, because every day I work in a wellhead policy. I know how to protect the wells, and I know how to protect people. I'm a business owner, and I care about this community, and I do care about everybody in this room. I care about everybody up here, and I care that this county and city will be what it always has been, a beautiful city. I will take any questions if you have, and I want to thank every one of you for this very long night and allowing every person to have the same equal rights, because it is very important that everybody's been treated equal tonight. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you very much. For the people that are in attendance, we are not voting on this tonight. In two weeks, it will be when it comes back for a vote on this item. So just wanted to let you, remind you all of that.
Does anybody talk in two weeks, or do they just vote?
It depends on what, if there's new information that's provided.
Typically, if council asks questions, they'll ask questions of the applicant, or if there's new information, they'll solicit that. We won't usually have a public meeting in this regard. It will be a public meeting, but not a public hearing-type conversation. That's typical process.
That is the last item that is on our agenda this evening, so I will now open it up to council comments. Mr. Air.
I would like to thank everyone for taking their time this evening. If you saw me yawn a little bit, this may be the largest packet I've had in 18 and a half years ago over last night. And so I wasn't trying to be rude in that. And I do appreciate all of you taking your time, both the, I guess, the Beaver family and those who are against the project, or maybe even those who are for the project. My normal comment is, if you weren't in Noblesville, Indiana last weekend, then you missed a lot, because there was a lot going on. And so we've got the Fourth of July coming up. Mr. Jensen has all kinds of projects going on, and if you can't find something free to do on Friday, Saturday night in Noblesville, Indiana, it's your fault.
On that note, I will remind everyone that the St. Michael Strawberry Festival is taking place this Saturday on the Courthouse Square in conjunction with Nickel Plate Arts and their Maker Fair and their Juneteenth celebration. So there's lots going on, continuing to go on. It's not free strawberries, though. Anything else? We will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.